...from session again, and the Minister of Defense, if anybody's signing in, Brandon.
Yes, sir.
The Minister of Defense, I have a motion second, and we'll go directly to item J.
No motion.
Second. Okay, we're going to go to item J, so the two people can leave if they like.
Just hurry, I'd like to make a motion, please. The Commissioner. The motion would be to suspend without pay service employee Charlie Parker effective June 14th, 2012 for thirty working days for violation of employee code conduct.
I see.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Oh, yes, vote.
Want a clarification, the previous suspension that Mr. Parker served, is that ratified or not ratified?
Your motion.
Or was that, um...
Well, it commenced in June the fourteenth.
Okay, that clarifies. That makes a lot of sense.
It was an obvious fight, wasn't it?
Oh, yes.
If I may, thank you very much. Thank you for your attention.
We will clear, Bobby. Find him, find out. That'd be the problem.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to, Minister of Defense, you ready?
Yes, I am. Okay, item A, an out-of-county student transfer for the 2012-2013 school year, my name's Logan. Item B, the following new and/or revised policies will be on public review for thirty days. They are attached. The first one, policy twenty-two sixty point zero one, section five oh four of the ADA, prohibiting against discrimination based on disability. Don't say that word. Policy fifty-five seventeen, anti-arrestment and violence, this is a revised one. Policy fifty-five seventeen point zero one, harassment intimidation or bullying, that's a revised one. Policy fifty-five seventeen point zero two, anti-arrestment of persons with a disability, this is a new one. Sixty-five ten point zero one, employee pay. Eighty-four sixty-two, student abuse and neglect, this is a new one. Item C, the following revised policy is presented for review and adoption on July the second, 2012. Policy forty-three seventy-three, this is the student code of conduct. This is exactly the replica of the state policy we are required to adopt in this case. Item D, five additional employment days for the following music teachers to conduct a mini man camp, June twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, July the second and third, 2012, at Lincoln County High School for qualified middle school students, this is paid from the county funds. They did this last year without additional days, and we felt it was such a success, that's what has helped increase our students at high school, and they have already enrolled quite a few from the middle schools, you know, so I'm hoping that there will be a significant growth with that.
According to Mr. Sax, this is not here now, it's around, it's somewhere between seven, seven-five students will be in the band next year. That's a vast number.
Item E, approval of the application for community eligibility option, known as the CEO, for West Virginia schools, beginning July the first, 2012, through June thirtieth, 2016, with all students receiving free meals. This is the place of, you know, the universal free meals that we had this year, and it's called a community eligibility option. West Virginia was one of the four states that were eligible to have this option. We are entering it at this time, as you will know, on the application, if there's any time within one of these years, one of these four years, that we feel, you all feel that this is not something that we can continue to do based upon the reimbursements, then we can opt out of that for the rest of the time. We're not locked into it, so that is a great benefit, but I think it was a very successful program this year, being able to feed our students free, and we want to continue this through God's blessing and...
Did you ever have any, or summary, or do you find it, or stay with some of this?
Ms. Candy is not in, she's been working on that.
I got this one, I mean, I think it's a wonderful program, whatever we can do to sustain this year, but I'm curious, I mean, some counties where I've heard, some counties have some problems, and they're losing quite a bit of money, whatever, I'm just wondering how we fare.
I'm hoping the last indication from her is that, right, that probably, right, that could...
Thanks, sir.
So, I guess, you know, she doesn't have the final figures, but she's very close to getting, you know, the final figures, so she'll give up the answer. Item F, a grant from the Claude Worthington Benedict Foundation payable over two years in the amount of $240,000 for a model middle school counseling program according to the terms of the grant. Hopefully, you all have read through this grant, and of course, with the personnel reductions that we had back in the winter, this will allow us to post for a couple of positions, or, you know...
Is that, that was one of my questions, is that, that's two counselors' positions for two years?
Yes, and with Bertie being here, I want to make sure that that would cover, you know, it's $120,000 each year.
So, on page two of this grant, at the middle of the page, I don't mean this is so specific, but I think, I'm curious about this wording, two conditions apply to the second installment of $120,000. The lease of the second installment will require evidence of sufficient matching funds to sustain the counseling program through the 2013, 14 year. What exactly was that made?
Okay.
How we want matching, that's my question.
The matching, the match, yes, we call for clarification, but the matching fund, what I want to be able to say is that we are working on an innovation zone grant through the State Department, and, Mr. Sross, I think we'll be able to secure that grant, which would be the matching funds for this Benedict grant. Mr. McKeever, I think you have some more information.
Well, Mr. Snyder contacted James, I always get the last name incorrect, is it DeNova?
What's his first name?
He's actually the person that's been with the grant who oversees the grants, our, I guess the day's on, or whatever they want to call it, but he indicated to Mr. Snyder that we will receive the money again next year, pending that we would receive, you know, let's say that for some reason we'd get a, I think he used the word variant, dollar grant from the federal government, which we're not going to get that kind of money, that we're going to get that money the same year. So, the language, yeah, it was a little confusing, but according to Mr. DeNova, we will receive the second round of money.
If, if we have matching funds?
Which is going to be tied to the...
If we get it.
Which, it's understanding is that we're going to get that money.
All right, that's our understanding, that's, you know, and we've been working on and getting that submitted, and that is September, that submission will be made, and we should know something by December.
But we're agreeing that we're going to produce funds here for matching. Someone's want to produce funds for matching.
Yes, except, except we're not going to commit county funds. I think that was the way I understood, that we're not going to count the funds.
At this point, when are you going to advertise for two additional positions, and are you going to do that now or later?
Soon, no. Ms. Candy, did you, did you not indicate to me that $120,000 would cover two? Okay, and what they said was as soon as they get this back from me signed, then we have the money, so I can go ahead and post.
Now, at this point, saying as we've abolished the numbers that we abolished in mid-winter, spring, will you now come back and ask the board to create those positions once again?
Well, I don't know if I have to do it that way, because if we establish it, those people, they automatically, like, July first, they want to pre-apply for this.
They will, but I'm talking about their positions.
Well, we'll have to check.
Yeah, I just think, you know, we abolished those positions, so would we not have to create the positions?
Create two new ones.
So, so that you can then post those positions.
Check, because I want to make sure.
Well, I mean, I've always wanted, thought you had to create, abolish, create, you know, right, if they were going, and if, and if you do that, would you be specific in saying that I'm creating those for school acts or whatever?
Yes, I will.
And it is only middle school? This program is only for middle school?
Well, when I read it, it did, you know, did you want to read it thoroughly? I first saw that, it says for model middle school program, but then it starts talking about, you know, supporting all of the elementary, you know, which were, that first paragraph says, for a model middle school counseling program, so, I don't know, my concern is that we're sure that we put the right places. Right place, oh, yes, 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 don't want to, don't want to mess up and not...
You can use them anywhere, so.
Right. Do not want to mess up and not put them in the right places.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, you may.
Mr. McKeever, after this is done, how many positions will we have, well, the numbers that we had last year?
With total counselors?
Well, total counselors, obviously, I mean, we had what?
I'm thinking we would be two less.
Did we have thirteen last year or not?
Well, actually, we had twelve.
Twelve, okay, there were twelve last year, and you think after this, these actions, that we would be up to ten of them?
I think so, I have to go back.
And I concur with that, I'm, I'm certain that that's where we'll have two more.
That's all business is, I have two.
Okay, so we'll be, we'll be two, have two fewer than we had this past year.
Yes, and then if the innovation zone grant is given to us, we secure that, then we would be at, yes, then we would be posting two additional.
But very worst, we would just have two fewer.
Yes.
So, will there still be a 90,000 shortfall that the commission was talking about?
No.
Okay, so if, with Benedict plus the innovation zone, would that bring you back to thirteen or twelve?
The twelve.
The twelve.
That we had.
Because they've always talked about thirteen up there, when Rick presents...
The social worker is in here.
They're including the social worker from high school when that comes.
Okay, and is that gone, or is that still there?
She's still...
Okay, okay, so it would be thirteen, it would be back to the thirteen they talk about, twelve social, twelve counselors and one.
And the social worker, yes.
Without need for 90,000 of football field money.
Yes.
Correct. Thank you very much. Carry on.
I think so.
And we can match this one.
Exactly.
It's not restricted.
I like these questions, guys. Make me think. I don't have all the answers. Okay, moving right along. Gee, a contract with JMS Education Consulting LLC to serve as administrative consultant to Guyan Valley Hamlin and West Hamlin Schools during the 2012-2013 school year according to the terms of the contract, and Ms. Coburn is here, if you have any questions.
What does this mean?
Well, you know, we have the SIG grants, which have, they require us to have outside consultants, work with our administrators and our teachers, and in the past, we had, you know, in the past two years, we had Mr. Steve Pauling, who was working with us. He cannot work as many years this, or as many days this coming year as he did last year. So, we're cutting his days back, and then we're picking up a new consultant, and this is, you may know Jan Stanley, who is retiring at State Department, who, who is just a wealth of knowledge, and we're going to have an opportunity to have her come and work with our SIG schools as well, and to assist us. We are fortunate enough that our SIG allotment has increased for one year. We, last year, Guyan Valley Middle School received $250,000, this year, they're receiving $400,000 with their SIG grant, and we're having situations where teachers have attended a lot of professional development, and we're seeing a drop off in attendance in professional development offerings that are, that we are providing after school, and on weekends, and over spring break, and during the summer, so we feel that if we bring people in to work with teachers during the school day, during their planning time, to be in those classrooms, model for them, you know, research has shown that to be very effective, so that was our thinking behind trying to bring in more of the soldiers, plus we had the luxury of having the extra money this year to provide that.
So, this is Jan Stanley?
Yeah.
Consultant.
Yes, yes, yes. And item A, just the contract with Steve Pauling to serve as administrative consultant to Guyan Valley Hamlin Schools during the 2012-2013 school year according to the terms of the contract, and that's also added by the school grant. I, additional appointment days for JROTC instructors to attend the JROTC Annual Instructors Conference in Richmond, Virginia, July the seventh through the twelfth. This is paid from county funds, and if you have questions, I think Mr. McKeever might be able to shed some light on that request.
Oh, this is, and they from the game we gave together today, it is, and this is another required training that they are to attend, and the reason that Dallas has one additional days, he's actually part of the group that's putting the training or professional development together, so that's why he is six days in practice, it's five.
And what was the statement on the request, that this is, this is a training that used to be in January, and they had moved it to July?
July.
And that we, as a county, are required to have at least one instructor, is that part of that?
That's correct.
At least one.
That's what it said.
Now, we, South County Fund, do we pay the whole, the whole salary, or do they only pay half of them? Like, well, it's half and half.
Half and half.
Yeah, only pays for half, I don't have that letter in front of me, okay, I mean, I did read it.
And they, yeah, we did, did that part of the contract.
Well, I still have problems with this, we just, like, two or three weeks ago, we approved a 220-day contract. Now, how those extra 20 days are used, you know, I think that is between you all and the instructors, or Mr. Sax, or maybe supervisor, but that's what 20 days are for, for additional duties and activities such as this. There aren't any teachers out there who wouldn't like to go to some conferences or activities related to a field. Now, you've stated that this is a man, something mandated by the Army to do this, well, that's fine, and certainly it is, at least one of them apparently needs to be there, but of their balance of 14 days then, throughout the year, are there not things that, I mean, what I'm saying is, are there not other days when they would have worked those 20 days that they wouldn't have to do if they did these six days? I can't understand how we can approve a 220-day contract when it comes, appears to me now that really they, they're needed more than 220 days, I, I just, it doesn't, I can't comprehend that.
It's the same issue, because I know what you're saying, because it goes back to the fact that we just recently approved...
The A and Ds.
Was that mandatory training?
That's also required training.
Well, but I mean, that was like, Fred, I mean, that was in the school year that's going to end, you know, June the thirtieth, so we thought, well, okay, we try to resolve this, we're going to start the new year beginning in July, and they need to have 220 days, and we debated it for two meetings, and we determined that that's what's needed, and then we turned right around to two or three weeks, did they not know that this was going on, or, I mean, I don't, it's just confusing to me, but I still don't understand why they can't work these five or six days, whatever the need may be, out of their 20 days.
The 220-day contract.
Because if they went in January, they used those days as part of their 220 days, it doesn't matter when, that's what they had done previously.
And Jeff said that representative had to depress it, it didn't say that they both had to attend.
I agree.
I think somewhere along the line, they have the unison with their supervisors, have to make some decisions as to how they use their extra days, and it's necessary to work all these additional days, because I'm like, I don't know what's going to happen next June, are we going to come back and hear that they need eight days again, you know, I mean, at some point, they need to determine how many days they work, is it 234, or 228, or 220, but they did, like, the rest of us, they need to work within their means of what their contracts are.
And if everything is mandated, that mandates over 220 days, then we need to take a look at our, at our contract.
Exactly.
If it's not, if they can work and do all the requirements, not what I'd like to do, or, you know, extra things, but what I have to do, can I do that 220 days? That's the question, I think, and, and I think if, if they have to go do this, then they started out July one with 220 days, aren't they?
Yes, and they use these within that 220 days.
I mean...
It would have to be part of that 220-day contract that starts...
That seems reasonable.
Let, let one instructor go and the other cover whatever needs to be covered, we're not doing this.
There may be another required training that the other one can go to or something, I don't know.
Well, and they still may do this, and they know that, at times, we had reading conferences occurred in the summer, and our school, when I know that one time, we chose to attend these things, and we went to them, but we didn't get paid for them, we went of our, you know, if our school participated in that particular program, we had to get that training, with, we all went, we didn't get paid, but we went so we could participate in programming, not suggesting they always do that, but I think what you just said, that between the two of them, they had to make sure they meet the mandated needs of the Army, and live within the contract, like everybody else does.
Well, just, just a question for you guys. Do you want me to pull this and put it, and put it back on for Monday, with only one of them? The instructor, and, or say that something, or one, or two, talk to Mr. Sax, make sure that he has these days included in that 220-day contract?
That's what I prefer, to help Mr. Sax and work it out with Hamlin.
Okay, with some of the activities.
Okay.
I think that Mr. Sax needs to meet with them, and then the three of them decide, you know, look at their whole year, and then decide, because obviously, we're going to have to approve the trip itself, or somebody, like, for them to go on this trip, and then come back after they, then come to you and recommend and tell you what they think they should do.
Okay, with a calendar.
Yeah, they, they should be able to, they have to be able to use their days, how they can best pursue their needs in the school system within the contracts.
Use their days to kind of, 220-day contract.
I like Mr. Wilkerson's idea there, that maybe one of them goes to certain activities, the other, or the other one goes to others, and they don't necessarily work the same year, year, date each year.
The same, or, they can stack.
Yeah, I mean, they, for the 200-day counter, they make, for the most important, the same, but for those other days, one they be working and the other ones off, and they, you know, got to live with your needs.
Okay, can I ask a question? You're going, you're going to pull that?
Yeah.
You're not going to pull that?
You're going to pull this, you're pulling, you're pulling item I.
I'll pull item I. Okay, and you're going to reword it on a next agenda? It'll be addressed on the next agenda, maybe. I don't know, what days are?
July, January.
Do you want something? And then you, you'll give to Brandon what, how you want to word it, yes?
Okay. Okay.
Okay, that's all.
That's the administrative.
Well, if it's necessary then, that we ask for the approval of all, with the exception of item I?
I follow your point.
Okay, sorry, sorry to get ahead of you, Mr. [inaudible]. I'm glad I'm on.
Okay, so you're going to approve number four, administrative.
We're going to vote on, we're going, we're going to vote on all the other, all the other items except item I and item J, we're all ready to vote on items, but at this time I have to vote, vote on all the other items.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Finance, Bertie.
Did you guys have a copy of invoices to be paid?
Yes.
Okay, because, you know, what, what this meeting is, is very last minute, get everything in as quick as possible, so you have that, and I have a copy of our budget transfers and supplements that I'll mention to you guys. There's the, there's the title papers. This is transfers and supplements. Yeah, titles, transfers and supplements, and we are into April, April managing, there's transfers, supplements, and the titles are there. And the supplement is definitely going into the budget, transfers is just money that I'm transferring from one line item into another, according to how they spend the money. And if you go to the one I didn't write on, I'll draw what it was. Transfers on it, or supplements, is that heavy, that's all I want to know. And what is it? It's just the supplement.
Supplement.
Okay, just write supplement, supplements, and if you just go to page two, now the line we're all through, all the new things, so all of those down is what we're going to approve. And like the leaders call it, summer food service, they need cleaning up some office or summer food service, Medicaid money, saving for, for schools, so I have those all identified, and the amount, money for each one. And that's on the last minute, house cleaning. There's probably something I should, you guys need to be aware of, if you will look at line eighty. And the description is renewed SBA funding for Harts PK eight, and see how much money they pulled out of their budget.
You need to be on top two, and if you're... Line eighty, that's all I want to talk about, that, that's the school members' home. So, we have this in the budget?
Yes.
Yes, they, they took it back, they took it back.
How much was it?
Nine hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven, so, so why I'm telling you guys, yes, once that got pulled out, I had to push in from the general fund, okay? I didn't have to put in quite that much, but if you'll see the next line, I had to put in 464,000. put in four hundred and sixty-four thousand.
Explain why that happened again.
I'm not sure why they have to lie, just certain things, I guess they getting gone.
You mean it wasn't leftover money? It was stuff that's money that was already been spent?
No, it was, it was, when, when they did the SBA, when they did their allocations and worked up the finances for Hartz, we were to get, well, actually we got an allocation of six point seventy million one year and the next year we got six point seventy million. So I put that, you know, that all goes into the budget. Well, then when we come down to the wire and I'm sending in my pay apps, now I get this note back, here's all we're going to pay you, you know, like, it ended up being about sixty-five thousand dollars. So, and I don't know, Trish probably has some of the details that I don't know why they're not paying certain things. But they, I had it in the budget to be received and we are not going to receive that money.
We asked and asked and asked them, you know, if there is this remaining amount of money that we, the school was built and this money was left, why can't we use it for things that we're finding? And they said no, they took it.
Well, you, you see money left.
They came under budget.
Yeah, but if it was left, why would we put four hundred and something thousand back in?
No, no.
That's my question.
I had it, no, I had it in my budget to be received from.
From B.
Yes, yes.
We didn't get it.
So it, it was still entrusted, it was allocated to us, but they pulled it back. It's like, you're not getting this money. We're pulling this allocation back. So that's what happened. So when they pulled that back, I was four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars short in the expenditures that we had paid, okay, expecting to get more from them and then it's like, you don't get it.
But the county's not having to kick in four hundred and?
Yes, they are.
Yes.
Yes, they are.
Well, we didn't have nine hundred thousand left and those were probably canceled. We had five hundred.
Right.
Okay.
Because we didn't actually spend, you know, I hadn't spent out the million, we had spent out the four sixty-four, that's what I had to use to, to get us back in balance.
And they refused to pay the four sixty-four.
Yes, that's what I needed to, that's what I needed to balance out was the four sixty-four.
About a million more on Hartz.
Yeah, in addition to everything else that we'd already paid.
And county money, it's not money they gave you.
And that's why I'm telling you guys this, you know, and I've already put everybody on notice, I mean, it's got to be net for everything.
And it should be in bright red.
Well, I am, I am disclosing to you guys.
You do neon on this.
It's why, you know, I try to disclose the really important.
So there's four hundred and sixty-four thousand or whatever it is.
Four sixty-four, seven eighty-six.
That wasn't budgeted.
I wasn't, I had not planned on putting in too that.
Back when we did our spring budget, it wasn't there.
Right.
You had to skip it in.
So what I'm telling you is get prepared for what's going to, what our financial status will be at the end of this year.
Lean back.
Yeah, it's, it's, next year's going to be a really hard year for the county. I think we're just going to have to be very, operate on minimal things as needed in emergency type situations and then try to recover from what's happened to us with building the school. Let's see, I'll find that report, whatever that last report that I gave you guys, that was pretty much it. There was one more legal deal that came in for just a few dollars, you know, and it wasn't anything. Seven, I think it was about seven, when it included all the legal costs with it.
I should just, I'm looking at that, I'm looking at lots of things, you know, just to try to, you know, make it available.
No, this is not good news at all, I mean, it's really, it's bad times, is all I can say. And so now you, you know, you guys understand we're, what's, what's happening to us and it'll take us, I mean, it'll probably take us a couple of years to recover from everything that we've had to put into Hartz because this, you know, we put in money last year, we put in about half a million last year, now we got another half a million this year plus we're paying those QZ bonds, you know, we got another.
So when we attempt to give any additional employment days, things like that, we need to caution.
Yeah, this is what we got. And, and so even like you said, you know, we have jobs, got to live in our hands here at least for a couple of years until we get ourselves recovered from this.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're, you're on target.
I agree.
Where we need to be. So, any questions about any other, my little time in the school system?
Just one quick thing, it's kind of off, off the wall, did the LCHS walkway, is that covered, walkway, it's got some students?
No.
No.
That's the bridge to where money that's going to do the walkway down to the athletic fields.
Okay, to the athletic?
Yes, that's what that is.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's what sort of that being.
It has wrestling programs, seven thousand dollars.
Well, we, I think Ford gave them seven thousand dollars to, they needed some equipment to get the wrestling program up and going and then we had to pay some rent, you know, had that discussion.
I know they paid some rent.
So that's, so what I did is I set up a little local project so I could try, you know, the allocation that we gave them.
So we need closer revenue.
Rent, pay in their equipment. And they, they had just a little tiny bit of money left, but I think they are moving back here.
They've moved on revenue.
They've moved, okay, so. So that's probably just, you know, one time thing to get them up and going, equipment and get them over here, so that's not going to happen again. Anything else? And then, of course, like I said, transfers, that's just, it's not new money, it's just moving it maybe from a payroll account to a supply account or just some, something like that, but now it's kind of like to leave the gear and clean everything up. Any questions on invoices? I do have copies of invoices from here. And.
I was just going to mention on the, on the schedule, school principals have been delayed, the number of dates before school starts and after and before that being enforced. I mean, are we willing to do that or are we just going to put it on?
No, we will, they will have to give us a calendar because they had done that a couple of years ago. They had actually gave me a calendar of days that they were working and talked to me about it, so they will be there this year and it's on.
Now, would that not be true of everyone that works beyond two hundred days? Not just principal?
Yes, we do that. So, so that, so that we know, so that we know where everyone is.
Right.
No, it's hardly one year.
No, I just, I think it all relates to this whole conversation.
Yes, yes, we have actually what's called an extended day calendar.
Now, on the description.
I did talk to Kim Harvey and we are going to do, she said it's a program that can be right in Sequel and I, I just need about a week, I had to get everything wrapped up on for end of the year. So as soon as I can get on my feet here, I'll get on top of that program and get that so that it will pull in and it should tell us, is it a, is it a finance department, supply, is it a transportation fuel, is it instructional supplies? And it'll give you those things, it'll be really, really good.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm excited that, that it's going to happen too. Yeah.
So that was a great question that you, Mr. Wilkinson had and, but I, I guess maybe one of the things that the reason you don't have, what were they, the last ones, Robins?
Yeah, yeah, Robins, see, Robins, oh, she's been all.
I understand what's happening this time of year, so don't worry.
Thank you. But I, I, I am working on it and it is available, I just have to, I gotta just learn how to do it.
That's fine.
Yeah, I do. I know you're going to finance.
Second.
Can you say that again, Ms.? I know you make a motion to approve the finance.
I say. How do you vote?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Motion second on personnel.
Second or motion.
Second.
Okay, you ready for that?
Okay, item A, there was no activity there, as you can see. Item B, employment of professional personnel. Item C, a transfer of professional personnel. Item D, no employment of substitute service personnel.
Could I ask a quick question of the?
Yes.
A speech assistant county attorney, what is that?
That means that they can go to the school, they're, they're need that.
That it's not a speech teacher?
No, it's a speech, these are people that have an undergraduate, undergraduate degree in speech, they just have not completed their master's program in speech. They don't really need to be, when they're certified as a speech pathologist or speech therapist, they have, have their masters. These are two people that will be working under a speech therapist and they are allowed, they're eligible to provide services.
Internship?
Well, it's really not totally as an internship because they actually can provide the services. They are not allowed to do the evaluations, the speech therapist has to do the evaluations or write the I P. They can provide the services that are required on the hand for students.
And as your salary schedule?
We are putting them on the teacher salary.
Teacher's salary?
Yeah, every how many years? No, it's actually sort of, I'd list the two for Donna.
So it's two new ones?
Yes, these are two.
These are two new ones that we made.
That's correct. I believe Jeremy is going to fund these two positions. Yes, especially if nothing, yes, they are. And these are two positions, they are allowable as far as the State Department, we're working with Kathy Nye from Harvard with this situation because, as you all know, we keep advertising and advertising for speech pathologists and we can't get them. And these will be, these are either already in a master's program or they are, once they are hired, they are allowed to go into a master's program.
So you will advertise for our channel, speech.
No. No. E, employment of service personnel. Item E, oh, I'm sorry, item F, transfer of service personnel. Item G, employment of extracurricular personnel. H, leave of absence.
Excuse me, when, when does Suzie start it there?
Well, we had to talk with Jeremy, I don't know if she's on location, I don't know if she's bothered or, you know, she didn't actually start. He's gone.
So you can just as, as, as a leave as soon as you can.
Item I, retirement and resignations. And it tells at the end except I four, and that is resignation.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah.